Welcome to the June 15, 2022, Meeting of the Lower Merion Board of Commissioners. Before we start, please silence your cellphones. Equipment for the hearing impaired is available up at the front here if it is needed. And with that, I want you to call us to order. So will the June 15, 2022, Meeting of the Lower Merion Board of Commissioners, please come to order?
And please all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll? Oh, sorry, I am ahead of myself on the schedule. So as habit. So before we get to the roll call, you recently, as some of you may know, the former Commissioner of War II, Pete Drayer, passed away. We were going to have a moment of silence in just a moment, but before we do that, I wanted to see any of my fellow commissioners wish to say anything in memoriam. Commissioner Grimes.
Thank you, President Sinai. I'd just like to say a few words. Pete Drayer leaves a tremendous record of public service to the residents of Gladwin, Lower Merion, and Montgomery County. He was a distinguished lawyer, an outstanding War II Commissioner, and an exemplary judge. He also served on many community boards, including the Gladwin Library, Gladwin Civic Association, and the National Lands Trust, and he was also active at Gladwin Presbyterian Church. Pete and Sandy, his wife, have lived in Gladwin since 1966, which is, I count, 56 years. I can think of no one more integral to the Gladwin community. Pete is someone who truly made Gladwin a better place. I'm fortunate to have known Pete beyond his record of career accomplishments and community service that I just skimmed the surface of. When I think of Pete, I think of a man of class and dignity. He was as much a mainstay in Gladwin as anyone. I first met Pete and Sandy just after I became a Commissioner. Pete and Sandy were regulars at Gladwin Civic meetings. In fact, until the pandemic, they hardly missed a meeting. Since Pete was a former Commissioner, I often looked to him in the audience to gauge his reaction to something I said or whatever topic was being discussed. Pete was unfailingly pleasant and supportive in all of our interactions. Many of us know Pete's wife, Sandy. Sandy is also a pillar of the Gladwin community, and I look forward to seeing her again at neighborhood events now that it's safer to gather. On behalf of the residents of Gladwin and Penn Valley in War II, and I hope on behalf of my colleagues, I want to express my condolences to Sandy and the other members of Pete's family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Grimes. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Bernheim.
Thank you very much, President Sinai. And I appreciate the fact that Commissioner Grimes was able to state what he did because I recognize I can't do it as well and is eloquently for somebody who is so deserving. I had the fortune of knowing Judge Drayer first, having met him as he sat on the bench and as a lawyer appearing before him. And I think that any litigant and any attorney that appeared before him would have a similar viewpoint, that it was professionalism, it was dignity, he was always extraordinarily well-prepared, and anybody that was in his courtroom felt they got a fair shake even if some of the rulings didn't go their way, and I did experience that. After Pete stepped down from being a judge, and I think it was after 20 years, I then did meet him, and it was at the Gladwin Civic. And when I referred to him as "Your Honor," he said, "No, it's Pete." And that was just his nature. And as Commissioner Grimes has outlined and only touched upon so little of it, he was always so community-oriented. It was something which was natural in his DNA, and he has served us well. And I've also had also the great fortune to deal with the real gem, somebody that Pete would quickly state was clearly the better half, and that is Sandy, who is just absolutely tremendous, tremendous person. And I've been able to work with Sandy in connection with the odd fellow cemetery, and anything good that's ever happened is really because of Sandy's work. So when I learned of the passing of Pete, I did send him an email, and I just wanted to share with you, if I may, Sandy's response or part of it. Dan, thank you to you and Sue for your kind email. Pete was indeed a gentleman, and I am coming to know through emails, calls, texts, what a tremendous impact he had on so many people. He was the love of my life, and our daughters and I blessed to have him in our lives. Well, so were we. And to Sandy and to your lovely daughters, thank you very much. Our thoughts and prayers are with you, and all of us can try to emulate being such a gentleman and a pillar of a community as Pete was. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Anyone else? With that, may I ask my colleagues to join me if we stand for a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gavern and Mr. Welland asked to be excused. Mr. Bernheim.
Present.
Mr. Churchill.
Present.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Here.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. McComb.
Here.
Mr. McKeon.
Here.
Ms. O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Present.
Mr. Zelloff.
Here.
Mr. Sinai.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a form.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. I'm now going to move for the approval of the minutes of a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on April 7, 2022, and a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on May 18, 2022, as distributed. If I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, abstentions? Okay, that carries. So some announcements. The Board met an executive session earlier this evening to receive reports from its professional staff regarding litigation, personnel matters, Lower Merion School District, coronavirus, and 1400 Mill Creek Road. An Ardmore Master Plan Open House, held on Tuesday, June 21, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. at 65 Crooked Avenue, Ardmore. In addition, an Ardmore Master Plan Community Charrette will be held the same day from 5:30 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the same location. Be good time to get information, ask questions about this master planning process that is going to, that is underway, or just starting to be underway, I should say, in Ardmore. A Capital Improvement Plan Workshop will be held on Wednesday, June 22, 2022, at approximately 6:00 p.m. An ARP, American Rescue Plan Community Needs Assessment Public Meeting, will be held on Monday, June 27, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Township Administration Building Boardroom. And that is part of the process that the township is going through to help decide the first steps of possible allocation of ARP funds from the second wave. On Monday, July 4, 2022, it's Independence Day, it's a legal holiday. The Township Administration Building and Libraries will be closed for business. There will be no refuse in recycling collection. And the stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners for August will be held on Monday, August 1, 2022, at approximately 7:00 p.m. With that, we're now going to spend a moment on Juneteenth. As most everyone is aware, June 19 is Juneteenth Freedom Day, and I and my colleagues are pleased to be able to recognize that in a proclamation. And I'm grateful for my colleagues for joining me, all of us, in having written this proclamation to share with you and have the support of this board. I'm going to read that at this point. Whereas Juneteenth provides an opportunity for Lower Merion Township to celebrate Black emerited heritage and honor the live sacrifices and contributions that are woven into the American fabric. And whereas Juneteenth also acknowledges America's commitment to liberty and equality in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, along with the Emancipation Proclamation and the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, which abolished slavery ratified by Congress on December 6, 1865. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation, effective January 1, 1863, decreeing all people held as slaves be henceforward free, however, some southern states ignored that order. And whereas Union General Gordon Granger was dispatched to Galveston, Texas, to announce the surrender of Confederate General Robert E. Lee, and on June 19, 1865, enforced the President's 1863 order, freeing the people still held in human bondage in the state of Texas two and a half years after it was first decreed. And whereas June 19 has since come to be known as Juneteenth, and is one of the oldest celebrations in America, growing out of the experiences of Black Americans and their enslaved ancestors, with the first official Juneteenth celebration taking place in Texas in 1866. And whereas remembrance of the history of Juneteenth supports our efforts to build a community that exemplifies and promotes the fundamental American values of freedom, diversity, equality, liberty, and justice for all. And now therefore, and it is proclaimed, June 19 is Juneteenth Freedom Day in Lower Merion Township. And be it further proclaimed that Lower Merion Township emphasizes the freedom and dignity of every human being and opposes and rejects any form of oppression. Thank you to my colleagues in this board for joining me in that proclamation. This is the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any non-agenda items or any other public matters in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. We're going to ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and if there's a group of people speaking, if someone's speaking on behalf of a group, we're going to ask you to keep to five minutes or less. Does anyone in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege on the floor?
Hello. I think the other part is for the, so I want to speak about when I was talking about at the building and planning meeting, and we were talking about the Ardmore Avenue Community Center and the Palm and that project there, and how the plan was the same as what was presented like eight months ago. And you called for community comments on it, and I just want to say that I really appreciate the fact that you guys are calling for community comments. That is really wonderful, what the Ardmore plan, how you're calling for community comments. But might I suggest that you let the community know which comments are being used, which comments are being incorporated, so that the community doesn't think, like I saw last week, the same plan eight months later, that all those comments are just being thrown away, and why should we bother? So I think it would be a really, really good idea if you guys just let us know, let the community know that, hey, we saw X, Y, and Z ideas, and we're going to incorporate those. Those are really good ideas. That way, we know that we're not being wasted. So our time is not being wasted. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Seltzer. Anyone else in the room? Take advantage of public privilege? Jody, do we have anyone online?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Does any board member wish to respond to the comment? In public privilege? All right, seeing none. This is the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any agenda items. Same time limit, rules apply. Anyone in the room wish to address the Board?
I would like to have referred to speaking on behalf of myself as a concerned citizen about historic resources in our community. This is regarding Consent Calendar Item F, which is the Monk Road subdivision. I continue to have concerns about the Condition Approval Number 24. I raised this at the Building and Planning Committee meeting last week, and I was somewhat surprised at what I thought was continued confusion regarding the classification and enumeration of historic resources by address or tract. The Historic Resource Inventory and the Historic Resource Overlay District do list property addresses as a means to locate and catalog the resources located on certain properties, but the actual resources protected are not the full address or tract, but the specific buildings, structures, sites, and objects that are described in Section A180 of our code. And if you read that section, it says, "The building, sites, structures, and objects identified and/or located on the property set forth below, as more fully described in the Township's Historic Resource Database, et cetera, et cetera, shall comprise the HRI." You have to go to the database. You have to pull that historic resource information, that HRI data sheet, in order to identify the historic resources located at a property that is listed on the H-Rod and the Historic Resource Inventory. That those database entries are very specific and detailed and are the result of the formal designation process, and that may be why the Historical Commission is required to include an actual architectural historian. I've requested a copy of the HRI for the property at Monk Road. What I read as protected is a large stone mansion and the complex of buildings. I think it's going to be really challenging to consider undeveloped vacant lots for Class I designation, but there is a process for that that will go through the Historical Commission. I might recommend a process improvement, specifically when considering a building, site, structure, or object for inclusion in the inventory as a Class I or Class II resource, the ordinance itself, and not just the HRI, excuse me, the ordinance itself should include the detailed description and not just the address, similar to what you would put in the HRI later. It should be in the ordinance, so we all understand what's protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Hello. Adrian Seltzer-Winwood speaking as Vice President, Mainline Branch, NAACP. I want to thank you very much for your proclamation on Juneteenth Freedom Day. It expressed what the holiday is about, the history. That was really good. But in our resolution, we had an action, and there doesn't seem to be any action in the proclamation, and I was wondering if you would consider this again. Be it therefore resolved, and of course, the phone went down. Be it therefore resolved that the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, Mainline Branch, requests the Board of Commissioners for the Township of Lower Merion work towards incorporating equity into all facets of township, business, purchasing, and ordinances. So I hope you will consider that work, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Jody, do we have anyone online for public comment?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Does any board member wish to respond to any of tonight's comments? All right, seeing none. So we move on to the business on the remainder of the agenda. So we have a number of items on Consent Calendar. Before we start, would any of my fellow commissioners like to remove anything from consent? Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes, please, thank you, Ms. Seltzer. Do that before your motion. So I'd like to pull the Grants.
I.
Yes?
Letter I.
Letter I off the agenda.
Okay. So, letter I is the Resolution for the Adoption of Community Development Block Grant Action for Plan Year, whatever the plan year.
Forty-eight.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Forty-eight.
Okay, thank you. Forty-eight.
So.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'd like to go ahead and make a.
We have to consent first.
Point of origin, I think if you're going to do the consent, and then come back to.
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So, that's fine. So we will take everything consent other than letter I. So I will move that we approve the Consent Calendar with the exception of the CDBG Resolution in letter I. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay. Commissioner Bernheim?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, you're waving at, I thought you were waving at me. So, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll for that?
Thank you for the adoption of the Consent Calendar as amended. Mr. Bernheim.
I.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Ms. McKeon.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Hi.
Mr. Stevenson.
I.
Mr. Zelloff.
Hi.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The Consent Calendar is duly adopted.
Thank you. We will now turn to a resolution for adoption of the Community Development Block Grant Action for Plan Year 48, that's 2022, 2023. That's on page 18 of your packet. And so I am going to move this as a resolution and then have it be amended, and we'll make it a friendly amendment. That'll probably just be the most convenient way to do it. So I will move that we adopt a resolution for the adoption of the Annual Action Plan for Year 48 in the amount of $992,047, and the filing of Fund Year 48 CDBG application, including all assurances and certifications contained therein. And I won't read through the exact items that are in it, but it is in our packet. Do I have a second for that motion? Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Any commissioners wish to amend that motion? Commissioner O'Neill?
Yeah, surprise. Thank you so much. What do you know about that? For my colleagues and members of the public who are, who have the packet on page 20 of our packet and the page dealing with public services for our activity for the 48 program year, my amendment will, I think, be taken in a package, and this is based on some unexpected income that has been credited to the current fiscal year program, but we can then apply to next year's program totaling $8,976. And so the motion will be to change three lines. The first being the Ardmore Avenue Community Center from the requested amount, the recommended funding amount of $110,654, to increase that by $3,959. So my recommendation as a part of the three amendments would be to make it $114,613 for its recommended funding. The second change deals with the Minibus program, and that is the recommended funding is $5,000, and my recommendation and motion is that it increase by $2,517, and that would make a total allocation for $7,513. Thirdly would be an increase to Box Lunch and a Book, which is currently being recommended funding at $2,500, to increase that by another $2,500 for a total of a $5,000 allocation for that line. And so that really kind of puts into position the three changes that I'm comfortable making to the benefit of three very worthwhile organizations. So if I could have a second on a friendly amendment.
Okay. So if anyone would like to make a second, otherwise I will just take it to friendly. It will be a friendly amendment, then?
Love it.
Okay. Does any commissioner wish to comment on this motion as amended? Thank you. Commissioner Zelloff?
Thank you, President Sinai. I support the motion and would just like to observe that the source of income that was somewhat unexpected is a repayment of a property in which the residential rehab program improved the property, and then it was sold within a relatively short period of time, and the requirements of the program are the recirculation of those funds back into the residential rehab program. It works, and it's a perfect example of how improving our existing affordable housing stock with CDBG funds is very effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zelloff. I think that point about the recycling of the money in that program, so it can keep getting applied over and over again, is a really important one. That's a really terrific program. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Bernheim?
Thank you very much, President Sinai, and I agree with everything that just was stated, as well as support the motion. I indicated last week, I thought the programs run by Box Lunch and a Book warranted that we were able to see, or warranted consideration of finding more money from them. Very fortunate that this came when it came. Timing was excellent. So I certainly support this wholeheartedly and appreciate that we had the opportunity to, not only many of the other programs we've listed, but be able to help this one out a little bit more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your hand. Or do we do a roll call here? Okay, okay. Opposed? Abstentions? Madam Secretary, I believe that carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you very much, Commissioner O'Neill. So I think with that, we turn to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? I see none. Any new business? Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, President Sinai. June is Pride Month, a time to recognize and celebrate the LGBTQ members of our community. Our LGBTQ family, friends, and neighbors are important members of our community who are valued and loved. Our Lower Merion Township Human Relations Commission was created in 2010, in part to address the fact that at that time, no federal or state laws provided employment protections to LGBTQ members of our community. These issues were left to local municipalities to regulate in a patchwork of laws, or lack thereof, across Pennsylvania. We should all be proud that our community recognized that unfairness and passed our human relations ordinance. Pennsylvania still has not enacted statewide legislation to protect all members of our community from discrimination. Our human relations ordinance remains an important actual, as well as symbolic, protection. Enacting an ordinance, however, is not enough. We must all, in our day-to-day lives, constantly strive to make this community welcoming and inclusive for everyone, including our LGBTQ residents, and especially our LGBTQ youth. There should be no place in Lower Merion for bigotry and intolerance of any kind, just for pride in our diversity and kindness to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kramer. You, I had, and I appreciate you bringing this forward. I had written some things about Pride Month as well, and I think you stated things much more eloquently than I could hope to have on this. You know, I think tonight we were, you know, I'm glad we were embracing our common goals of equality tonight. And, you know, I have thought back, and I was thinking about tonight, about the progress we have made, you know, as a country and as a community in supporting LGBTQ rights, inclusion. I think back to, you know, what the discourse was when I was a child versus the discourse and support that my kids experienced in a community that's accepting as Lower Merion. And I'm proud of how far we've come as a society, and I still recognize how far we have to go. You know, if you look at what's happening in the country, and fortunately not happening in our community, but what's happening in the country, it is somewhat disheartening and somewhat scary, and I am horrified by near catastrophes like in Coeur d'Alene. So there are challenges, right, that children and adults in the LGBTQ community have. And, you know, I think through it all, I think we were fortunate, and I'm glad, that Lower Merion is and is a place that aspires to be respectful and supportive and has those values that I certainly am proud to share. Anyone else?